It's up to you. I can just delay it, you know, if you want. I mean, it's up to you. Would you like to?
I don't know. I mean, I'd hate it if she's trapped it in.
No, I understand. Yeah, I don't want to miss. I don't want to ever miss it, but um. I don't know. Is that him?
Mayor, I see. Mayor, we can begin and then if they do arrive, we'll go back to that.
Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the August fourteenth Clearwater City Council Work Session. City Manager and our Council Member Lena Chishara are not with us today, but they should be with us on Thursday evening. I want to start with saying that today is the two-year anniversary of losing Bill Horn, our city manager. So I look forward to the time that we open our new city hall with his name on the building and we'll all be there to honor him. So please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. I'm Loretta, his wife. We're going to start with economic development and housing. So we'll go to item three point one, please.
A $250,000 grant for startup and one year ongoing operation expenses of Amplify Clearwater Tourism Incubator.
Hi, good afternoon. Very wet Denise Sanders. It's pouring out there. So on September one, 2022, City Council approved an allocation of $250,000 in ARPA local fiscal recovery funds for the establishment of a business incubator. And on July seventh, Amplify Clearwater submitted a detailed business plan for the establishment of the same. And this is focused on cultivating and strengthening the area's tourism ecosystem, specifically focused on innovation and sustainability within the tourism industry sector. The business plan is attached to the agenda. And rather than reviewing the business plan, it is forty-six pages in length, I'd like to share with you some thoughts on business incubators generally. So according to the National Business Incubation Association, statistics show that incubators or incubated businesses rather have an eighty-seven percent survival rate after five years. Compared to non-incubated businesses, that that rate falls to forty-four percent. There are numerous types of business incubators, but they should not be confused with coworking spaces or accelerators. Incubators are for startups and provide mentorship and coaching, access to capital, shared resources, and structured training programs. Though coworking spaces and accelerators are different than an incubator, that doesn't mean that these elements aren't important to an overall ecosystem and may in fact become a part of Amplify's offering over time, but they are considered separate. Excuse me. Give me a second here. Incubators are typically framed around one of two financial models. There's an equity stake model out there and it's typical for for-profit incubators. The incubator takes an equity stake in the business, usually between ten and twenty percent. It often seems to center around ten percent. The structure of an equity varies and can be really creative, but the bottom line is that the more successful a business is, the greater the equity return is for the incubator. The other model is a fee basis, and this is the model being proposed by Amplify Clearwater and EIC. Typical nonprofit incubators, these are funded by universities or county or municipal organizations. And one of the most well-known and successful in the state of Florida is actually actually operated by University of Central Florida. It's it's actually eight incubators over a four-county area. And most assume that UCF's program is funded by UCF itself through allocations out of UCF. And in fact, what UCF, what the university contributes is administrative marketing and some back office support. Most of the funding, the vast majority of the funding is coming from local county and municipal governments and economic development organizations and organizations like the Florida High Tech Corridor. I share this because it's important to know that financial support through fundraising and other means is generally necessary for incubators. And I've reviewed the business plan and find it to be based on solid research and understanding of incubation practices and principles. And what I find particularly interesting is that the proposed incubator program is particularly well-suited for local and regional assets, that is tourism, and seeks to elevate the city's interest in pursuing sustainability initiatives. It seeks to leverage our community's tourism resources and among them the tremendous human capital we have here that are capable of delivering the mentorship and networking opportunities that are so essential to an incubation program and endeavors to incubate businesses in all areas of tourism. Amplify's partnership with Economic Impact Catalyst, which is a local firm that specializes in this space, is further evidence of their commitment and understanding. So staff recommends support of this in the amount of $250,000, specifically $150,000 to support startup costs, another $50,000 at launch of the first cohort on or about October second, and $50,000 upon launch of the cohort two, which is expected to be launched on April fifteenth, 2023. Amanda Payne and David Punraj, David is from EIC, will be here on Thursday night. I believe David intends to make a verbal presentation, but at this time, happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments on this? Yes, sir.
So this is something taken on by Amplify as like a rebranding of Spark?
Sort of. So for those of you that may be familiar with that, Clearwater Business Spark is an initiative that we founded back in 2015 with five partners, Amplify being one of them, formerly known as the Regional Chamber. So Clearwater Business Spark always had this kind of hole in the product delivery, that being incubation. But we, the Spark members include the Small Business Development Center, SCORE, and numerous others. There were eleven partners in total. And my understanding is evidence or is written in this business plan is that the Spark partners will continue to be engaged in the overall delivery of incubation services. But this does indeed fill a hole in that offering.
You know, we all received an email today about someone that thought that it wasn't a good idea for an incubator and gave reasons why, and I read it. But you know, with Amplify taking this off, I think they're, and I've read their prospectus or executive summary, seems like that it's a good thing for them to be doing and I think it's going to be successful. I really do.
I think so. I have a high degree of confidence. Agreed.
Thank you. Anything else?
I was surprised reading through this that it was a tourism incubator. Was it, have we discussed that in the past in these meetings?
We have not. I was surprised at first as well. Turns out it'll be the only tourism incubator in all of the state of Florida and only the second in the country, which I think is really fascinating. And then when you look across the types of tourism that there are, certainly we're most familiar with our beach tourism, right? And then you add in other eco-tourism activities, medical tourism. There's all sorts of interesting opportunities where innovation can occur. So I think it's really appropriate and important that they're focusing on tourism. It's what they know. It's what we have, as I mentioned here, in terms of assets in the community, both human and otherwise. So I think it's a great way to leverage what we're already experts at and taking it to the next level.
Well, I can see, you know, the positives to it. But the the way this was carved out when we were setting aside ARPA money and there was a lot of discussion about North Greenwood. And when we talked about the incubator, I thought, well, this is going to be great to benefit some folks in North Greenwood. And I brought that up in several meetings, hoping that we could, you know, help the next Yo Mama appear and prosper. So I was a little surprised that the one industry that that is going strong here is what this is geared at. Had I known at that point, I probably would have sided with Council Member Beckman to say, well, let's have them submit this with everything else.
If I may, I'll remind you that the $250,000 that was pulled in ARPA funding and set aside for this purpose came out of the Education Grants and Partnerships bucket of funding. And the incubators throughout the region are well-suited. We have tech incubators. We have several different. We have one of them in St. Pete, Tampa, Pasco County. Pasco County is not a tech incubator. It's more of a manufacturing incubator, quite appropriate for an organization like Yo Mama's as an example. So typically, when you look around the region, what you want to be certain that you're doing is not duplicating services that are already being delivered because most, if not all, incubators will take eligible businesses from a region and not from a specifically defined geography that's so limited as a perhaps a county or municipal location. So I think if you keep in mind the broader construct of how incubators can be successful, you want to make sure that you're filling a niche and not duplicating.
I'm not trying to suggest that this won't be successful and a valuable thing to have. I was just kind of surprised at the late discovery of this.
Okay. Anything else?
Hi. I thought certainly this prospectus or their business plan is pretty impressive. I had a couple of questions. I'm not sure you can answer Denise, but I'll ask. Do you know what the expected size of the cohorts is?
I do not, and I didn't see reference to it in the business plan, though I may have missed it.
Okay. And then, so this is the, this is not so much a stake in a company as it is a fee? I was, there was no kind of idea of how much they would charge people to participate. They apply to be part of the cohort. And then what's that fee? What that fee might be?
I don't know, but I would caution anybody if they're thinking that the fees would end up offsetting the total cost. They are absolutely going to need to fundraise. They should pursue grants. There's plenty of them out, both at the national and state level, and not so much at the local level. We are the local level or the county. I do know that they anticipate pursuing penny-for funds for economic development to assist with build-out of their facility. So I do know that they're intending to pursue a multi-pronged approach, but that is not to suggest that any fees collected would offset the overall costs.
Okay. And a lot of their benefits have high dollar amounts to them, the value, hundred thousand dollars worth of all that kind of thing, which is fantastic. I love that they've got a sustainability focus. That's great. And that they have some key performance indicators noted. The question I have is you made it pretty clear that this format needs, you said most money comes from local governments and financial support is going to be necessary for other partners.
Most often, local governments are contributors to it. I'm not saying that we should consider it on an annual basis. That's not what's being requested here, but it's not uncommon.
So the question I think I have is, they have, we have the $250,000 set aside. They have a business plan and a means of allocating it at a hundred and fifty, and then fifty and fifty. That all seems fine. I'm just wondering, after that first year, how much, you know, is there going to be a continual, continuous annual ask for support of it? Do you anticipate that?
It was not indicated in the business plan and they've indicated that they have other fundraising and, you know, grant opportunities they intend to pursue. I think it's an appropriate question for Thursday night.
Okay. All right. I think that's all good then. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. My understanding is a one-off. We'll find out from Thursday night that it's just they're asking for the one time. I support this because we had an article on the paper this morning saying how great the tourism was last year as record-setting. This year it's down. It's down across the board, from Orlando to Tampa to Hillsborough County to Pinellas County. It's not horrible, but it's down. If you go to TDC and you listen to the Janet Wong's of the world, have been to all these international forums and where everybody's there, there is this tremendous competition. And we are in the folds right now of tremendous competition for the travel dollar for people to come here. So we can start up new businesses. They can expand our horizons and do medical, maybe sports with all the athletic fields we have here, other and types of travel besides just going to the beach and having a good time, which is very important. But there are other opportunities, so that's why I support this and I think it will be a good thing. So thank you. I'll look forward to hearing from them on Thursday. And obviously, we want to, we want to talk about this Thursday, right? Okay, thank you. Three point two, please.
A private state housing initiative partnership program annual report and local housing incentive certification.
Thank you. I feel like I look like a drawn rat.
You're.
Yes.
I'm a tornado. Sorry about that. Anyway, so cameras off of me, Joel, please. So the ship annual report. By September fifteenth of each year, we're required to submit an annual report of the city's use of state housing initiatives partnership program or ship program. So the report is attached to your agenda, and I'll start by first apologizing for its terrible format. This is auto-generated by something created by the state and it spits it out and there we have it and it's ugly. But so forgive the poor margins. The content is really what we're here to discuss. It is a unique funding source and it requires us to meet several set-asides. We call them buckets, all sorts of different terms. But minimally, we're required to set aside thirty percent of the funds to be spent for very low or extremely low income. That is fifty percent AMI and below. Another minimum of thirty percent is on low income, that of eighty percent and below. A minimum of twenty percent with special needs, seventy-five percent on construction. Again, these are minimums for the rehab or new construction. And a minimum of sixty-five percent of homeownership. So you add all that up, it will exceed a hundred. Obviously, some of these can hit multiple buckets. But you know, income being what it is, you take sixty percent for very low, extremely low and low income. You then add ten percent, which is our administrative set aside to help offset salaries. That leaves a maximum of thirty percent for funding that can be used for over eighty percent AMI. So this is the only funding source that can support that income strategy. So we're very constrained there and we've talked about that in the past. Because of those constraints to meet these buckets requirements, we're allowed to utilize these funds over a three-year period. So this is for the closeout year of fiscal year 2021. We operate for this funding source on the state fiscal year, which ended June thirtieth. So 2021, 2122, and 2223 is when we're actually allowed to use the funds from fiscal year 2021. This happened to be a fiscal year in which the governor vetoed all allocations of ship. COVID was upon us, not knowing where the state's economy would go. We had a zero percent allocation. But you will see $433,000 and change in program income. So I'll remind you, program income is from the revenues received from loan repayments. And since that's a great deal of our work, you're going to see program income for every year that we claim a ship funding source. You may also notice, this is on page three of the report, I believe, page, page two, excuse me, of the report, an amount of $77,959.86 in negative carryover. And so we've had some questions about what is negative carryover, negative carryover from previous years. So imagine if you will, these books are left open for fiscal year 2021. Through the fiscal year we just ended, we can use those funds on any projects and in conjunction with other year funding that happens to be open at that time. So in last year's report, closeout report for fiscal year 1920, which again gave us those three years to use it, we utilized about $78,000 of funds for, that we received for fiscal year 2021 in program income. We used it on project reported in last year's report, hence a negative carryover. In other words, it was pulled back into another year to support a project that was allocated to that year. You can only report a project one time, so this will happen quite often. But in short, we had, when you take out that negative carryover, that $433,000 now drops down to $355,000 and change. So for the $355,000, you'll find that we provided $45,300 in purchase of an existing home. We did seven single-family units that were rehabilitated for a total spend of about $182,500. We contributed funds for construction of one single-family home at a total cost of $103,314.86. Total expenditures in these categories was $331,000 and change. Then you take the ten percent admin on that and that pulls another $33,100. Total spend for that year then comes up to $362, yet we had available $355,000. What that really means is we will have a negative carry forward into next year's report of $6,972.49. So the demographics and all those bucket requirements are shown on the following pages, pages three through five. And on page eleven of that report, you'll see the interim year data for interim year one. That is data for fiscal year 2122. Just pointing it out to you because you'll see more about this in next year's closeout report. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments, Ms. Anderson? Yes, sir.
Not a question, but I just wanted to point out what I read on on page seven here because this impressed me. Mr. Michael Taylor, a special needs homeowner, was in financial assistance. He had roofing, electrical plumbing, air conditioning, cabinets were falling off his walls. He needed repairs. But there were some problems with his title. So rather than the staff saying, sorry, you don't qualify, they reached out to his financial institutions and went above and beyond to clean that up so we could do all this work for him and also got him over to paint your heart out and they painted his home too. So he, it says here that Mr. Taylor has expressed his gratitude to staff and I do as well.
Thank you for that. We have extraordinary people doing really incredible things every day. So I appreciate that.
I would second that. That's tremendous and we need to do more of that across the board. The answer should be yes now. What can we do to help? Here's what we can, here's what we need to do to help instead of no, we just can't do that. So anyway, I appreciate that very much. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to, where are we now? Three point three.
Appoint eleven members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, including one member of city council to act as a locally elected official.
So we can talk through this if you wish to do so. I understand from the city manager's office, their preference is to push this until the next meeting to continue this item. Couple of reasons for that. One, the local planning agency, which is our community development board, did have to postpone a meeting and will have that meeting now on August thirtieth. So we will not have a name to fill into that slot at this time. Similarly, the Neighborhood Affordable Housing Advisory Board has a vacant seat and that too will get filled on September seventh. So when we bring this forward September seventh, all names will be added. If you wish to discuss today, your desire for the local elected official, I suppose that would be okay, but we'll have that conversation on Sept, in September fifth, excuse me, when we meet for our work session. And then finally, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee does start on September twelfth. So having this discussion that first week in September is not inappropriate to staff that committee at that time.
Yeah, why don't we do that? That way we'll have council member to share with us and we can have a full discussion. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Public Works, four point one, please.
A private street name change from Whistful Vista Drive to Chabad Drive and adopt resolution twenty-three dash eleven.
Afternoon.
Afternoon. I promise I'm quicker downhill.
Take your time. There's no hurry.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council Members, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney, Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate Coordinator. In summary today, Chabad of Clearwater filed a request at the Public Works Department to rename the adjoining rear street, Whistful Vista Drive to Chabad Drive. Upon receipt, when that was given to me, I made it a priority. In support of this request, Rabbi Levy presented a Pinellas County nine-eleven department approval letter dated June sixth. In due diligence further, I visited the local post office, being told no other persons or businesses use Whistful Vista Drive address. I also spoke to the few non-adjoning neighborhood businesses on Bellar Road and South Belcher Road, all without opposition. Lastly, I then confirmed with Pinellas County that Chabad of Clearwater is the only landowner on Whistful Vista Drive. Therefore, Chabad of Clearwater respectfully asks the City of Clearwater to approve this request and adopt resolution twenty-three dash eleven. City staff has reviewed and approved the street name change from Whistful Vista Drive to Chabad Drive. Any questions, please?
Any questions or comments? I guess we don't have to worry about the neighbors complaining, right?
No, sir. Also, Rabbi has reached out to me wanting myself to present the physical name street sign at a presentation they're having on August twenty-seventh at three o'clock, which I honorably accepted. And I've also asked our current director, Marcus Williamson, to also attend. So the city will be well represented.
All right, great. All right, four point two, please.
A private utility easement conveyance request from DD Gulf to Bay LLC to solve repair and maintain and as affecting real property at 2975 Gulf to Bay Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council Members, City Attorney, Assistant City Manager, Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate Coordinator. In summary, the landowner, DD Gulf to Bay, in its continued efforts to develop this property, has presented current as-bill plans showing the proposed conveyed utility easement path. Now we now need to step back. From an earlier approved vacation ordinance, ninety-five oh seven dash twenty-one dated October seventh, 2021, the city has reserved the utility easement. The presented as-bill plans identify both the past reserved and the current connecting utility easements. These plans clearly show the proposed two connection points from the east and west property sites to the city easement. All presented utilities shall be placed within defined easement. City staff have reviewed and approved this easement conveyance request. Any questions, please?
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Planning, five point one, please.
A private annexation initial future land use map designations of residential estate, RE, and drainage feature overlay and initial zoning atlas designation of low-density residential, LTR, for properties at, for the parcel on Tanglewood Drive, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Dylan Prens Plan Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a zero point four five six acre property consisting of one parcel of vacant land. The property is located on the north side of Tanglewood Drive, approximately six hundred and seventy-five feet west of Oak Creek Drive East. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The applicant has indicated a desire to construct a detached dwelling on the property, but no plans have been submitted at this time. The property is contiguous to existing city boundaries to the north and east. It is proposed that the property be assigned future land use map designations of residential estate and drainage feature overlay and zoning atlas designation of low-density residential. The property currently receives water service from Pinellas County. The closest sanitary sewer line is located in the Oak Creek Drive North right away to the north of the subject property, which the property owner plans to extend the private line. The applicant is aware of the city sewer impact fee, impact and assessment fees must be paid in full prior to connection and of the additional cost to extend city sewer service to this property. Questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Five point two, please.
A private annexation initial future land use map designations of residential estate and water and initial zoning atlas designation for low-density residential for property.
The applicant, the applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The property is not contiguous to existing city limits. However, it is an enclave surrounded by city property on all sides and is eligible for annexation pursuant to the inter-local service boundary agreement with Pinellas County. It is proposed that the property be assigned to future land use map designations of residential estate and water and zoning designation, zoning atlas designation of low-density residential. The property currently receives water service from Pinellas County. The closest sanitary sewer line is located in the adjacent McCauley Road right-of-way. The applicant is aware that the city sewer impact fee and assessment fees must be paid in full prior to connection, and of additional cost to extend city sewer service to this property.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Information Technology, six point one, please.
Authorize an increase on purchase order charter communications during business at Spectrum Enterprise.
Mayor, Council, Dan Mayer, IT Director. We're at the end of a three-year term with Spectrum. This provides miscellaneous services. These do not connect to our network. They're for public Wi-Fi at parks, at rec center, teen rooms, at some of the libraries, and then at the marina. So we do have formal service with Spectrum for our network for ISP service, out-of-channel services. So we're working with purchasing to bring all of these under one umbrella and one purchase order as opposed to multiple purchase orders by department.
Any questions or comments on this? Consent? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Utilities, seven point one, sorry.
I approve a purchase order to Polydine for cationic dewatering polymer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Rich Gardner, Director of Public Utilities. The item before you today is for the authorization of a purchase order for polymer for the water reclamation facilities. The polymer is used to condition sludge, making it easier to de-water, thereby reducing disposal volume and resultant cost of the sludge disposal. We're recommending a word to Polydine in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Excuse me. This is a one-year contract from July first, twenty, twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, with the option for three one-year renewals. I'm asking you to authorize a purchase order, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Consent? Thank you. Seven point two, please.
I approve change order two to Poole and Ken's Company for the Marshall Street Water Reclamation Facility.
Good afternoon, Jeremy Brown, Engineering Manager for Public Utilities. The purpose of this project is to repair and replace some of the control gates at the Marshall Street Water Reclamation Facility. The control gates are what allow plant operators to balance the flow rates into the various aeration tanks. They also allow operations to isolate tanks for maintenance, and then drain the tank. Due to a longer process to approve and obtain the replacement gates, the contractor requests the contract duration be extended to April eighth, twenty-twenty-four. I'll note that's actually two hundred and eighty days, not the two hundred and seventy that's indicated in the agenda item. And then because we extended the contract, or we're looking to extend the contract duration, we also need to increase the budget for the engineer of record who's overseeing said contractor. So that's the supplemental record three in your, in your ordinance. And then lastly, we'd like to use this opportunity to replenish our available contingency, and that's the change order two that's in your agenda items. With that, I'm happy to respond to questions, and I have some visuals, too, if you'd like to see some.
So my question here is, they're behind schedule, correct?
We are behind schedule.
We, it's our fault?
It's a collective effort, if you will.
And they bid on this at a certain price, and now they're asking us to give them an additional two hundred and, almost eighty, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars?
No, that's, that's not quite accurate.
But it's, it's out there in case they need it, is that what it is?
Yeah, so again, I have visuals if, if it helps. And so once we drain the tank, I know some of you have seen, seen some of these on your field trips, that way then you can then inspect it, right? You can't see it, you can't see through the wastewater. And so part of the project was, since we have to replace these control gates, well, in order to do that, we have to drain the tank, well, while we're in there, let's see what else needs to be fixed. There's diffusers on the bottom that blow air, bubbles into, into the tanks, and then the concrete itself is spalling over time. And so what ended up happening was there was a lot more concrete repair work that we originally anticipated, and so we actually used some of the contingency that we had that was already approved for those efforts. And now while they're doing that, we're asking to replenish that amount just in case something else comes up in the future. We're, we're not authorizing to use it, you're just authorizing us to have it, and then we will authorize the use of it if we feel it's appropriate.
So is this something that's normal that we do? I mean, is this, I'm the attorney, is this something that, what are your thoughts on this?
The legal team has signed off on this with a little bit of reluctance. I mean, I am comfortable that it is legally permissible for the council to replenish contingency funds in this manner if you choose to do so. So we have approved this for the council agenda. However, my concern with something like replenishing contingency, particularly when you run into complex fields like this one, is that vendors will find a way to spend it. So I can almost bet dollars to donuts that when you replenish a contingency in any context, and this is not Mr. Brown's fault, it's not specific to the City of Clearwater, it's not specific to Public Utilities, but if they know that that money is out there, they will find reasons to spend it. And so that is the only concern that I would have, but it is not a pure legal concern. That is a policy decision for the council.
Can I just add, though, that we, we are the ones that authorize use of it. Myself, the director to my left, we don't, yes, they may point something out because they're there, and they say, hey, this other thing's broken that you guys didn't notice. Do you want to fix it? And they'll give us a cost for it. We evaluate it, we determine whether we think it's in the city's best interest. Sometimes we don't. In the letter that's on your attachment, and there's reference to a duck bank work, we decided not to do that work because we didn't think it was appropriate at this time. But I, if I may, one more thing, too, though, if there is no contingency, and something does come up that is a legit concern that needs to happen before the contractor can demobilize and finish the project, now we're at risk. Because now they're going to say, well, you got to pay us, it's going to cost us extra money to do it. If we don't have the funding available, then we have to come back to you. This takes time. During that timeframe, we're now, we are now actually delaying the contractor, and that there is a legit delay claim, which then costs even more money. So we think this is a good approach to trying to make the projects more efficient.
That was kind of my question, like, what are the drawbacks to not replenishing the contingency? Although I would say, if they get down there and they see something that needs to be fixed, and they let you know, Jeremy, and you're like, yeah, we need to get it fixed, now we got to go back to the council, if it's a hundred thousand or less, you get the money right away, because the city manager can give you the money if, if need be, right? Up to a hundred thousand dollars without coming back to us.
Yeah. Ten percent she can do, but not a hundred, because it could be over any threshold when you add a hundred, so.
Correct.
So it's whatever's higher, or?
I just show a couple visuals. So this is a tank after it's drained. I know it's not the best. And so again, it's filled with wastewater. You don't see it until you drain it. Look down in there, those are the diffusers at the bottom, some of them were damaged, we had to replace them. You don't know how many are damaged until you, until you drain it and look at it. Like, the concrete along the sides of the perimeters and the crossings you see there, you don't get a full extent, because you maybe will see the sides of it while it's full of wastewater, you can't see underneath it. And so let me show you this other one real quick while they have your attention. So this is one of the repairs to the underside. And so they have to install that fresh rebar, they have to form it, they have to pour concrete around it, and that continues, concrete continues to deteriorate over time, particularly in this corrosive environment of wastewater plant. And so any, any, and so it's, it's kind of expected that it's going to get a little bit worse than it was when you started. It was much worse than we anticipated in this situation.
And we don't, you don't drain them all before you go out to bid to know what you're up against, like what we're trying to, how bad it is?
It's a case-by-case kind of basis. These particular ones, some of these, the, the, they're, the gates were inoperable, and they, they wouldn't hold the seal, and so we couldn't really drain them until the contractor came in, helped to set up bypass equipment so that way we could actually try to plug whatever we could in order to drain it, to then inspect it. So, Rich, this is where, sir?
Rich Gardner, Director of Public Utilities.
Move over to my.
Sorry. Rich Gardner, we did drain one tank, and we based our unit quantities on that one tank. We drained a wrong tank. So the repairs have been much worse than what we thought.
You drained it one of the best conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess my concern is, when we do these types of projects and these people bid on this, do they bid on the job, or do they bid on just specifics, and then if you find something else, then we have to come into contingencies? I mean, I equate this to, maybe, and maybe it's not a, maybe it's just not apples and apples, but I mean, I built a new home during COVID. Brand-new home, and it took a little longer, the guy got it done pretty well, but he was complaining to me and my fiancee every day about how much more it's costing, not making any money. But we didn't go to tariff the contract, I didn't put another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in escrow, because guess what, like the attorney said, he would have used it. And that's my concern. Is that the practice that we do? Is that we, with contingencies, or when we're bidding on a job, are they bidding on the complete job, or is it just, oh, we went or found something we didn't know about, now it's going to cost us an extra two hundred?
They don't bid on a contingency. A contingency is a line item that you all approve for us, Rich, myself, to authorize. They bid line items. I think we talked about this a couple weeks ago. That's what they're locked into, those line items. The contingency is unplanned, think of it as unplanned, unforeseen work, right? I mean, you're going to install a door, it's pretty cut and dry, okay, you're going to do this, this, and this, right? Well, you're going to, you know, address and approve an aeration tank, there's a lot of unknowns, particularly in this industry, when, when just the concrete, the materials, the facilities are all aged, they're so aged, you don't always know. We try to, we hire the engineers, we ask them to go out and try to do whatever legwork they can to prevent overruns. We don't like overruns, right? But sometimes you've already got it opened up, now's the time to fix it. And that's, that's the discretion that we use when we apply contingency.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Slaughter. So I guess, you look at it from the context of, if you give them contingency, they're going to use it, but then if they overestimate that they're going to do all this additional work that we may not need, you're doing the same scenario. So they're doing the best they can. They, they scrutinize, and I have had the opportunity to go out there for the last Friday, for the last month and a half or month, and look at the condition of what they're trying to fix, and it is a little bit of, of a science in the sense of trying to figure out what needs to be done. It really is not that transparent until they get the tanks done and start really evaluating it. We could bid the job, and the bid is based on the scope that they give them, and if they give them the scope for this narrow particular issues that we see, and then they find other issues, that's the contingency, and that's not going to be included in the scope, right? That's outside the scope. But the, 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 the point I wanted to make, though, is that they bid the job based on the scope, and the scope is limited to what they think they need to do, and if they see other things, that's what we're really having to deal with. And there is a lot of unforeseen issues in these particular devices that are churning at a regular rate, and taking them offline has a certain impact on our operation as well. To take them offline and then kind of wait a certain amount of time is, is an issue in itself. So they do a pretty good job of scrutinizing, they're not just giving a blank check to anybody, I can guarantee you that, and they get enough scrutiny from in-house as well.
All right. My other question is, we had problems with this contractor in the past.
Tactical, I mean, no, not, not, nothing significant.
Delays?
We're working through some issues now with, with the gates and everything.
Delays like this, or?
I'm sorry?
Delays such as this in the past?
Again, it's not attributed directly to them. Like I said, we were a partner in this. It took a lot of time working through the submittal process and then getting the gates ordered, as you know, with the supply chain, supply chain issues that are out there, that's, you know, that's obviously a part of it as well.
All right.
I wouldn't attribute it to, to particularly them. Sorry.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, again, clarify the difference between a contingency to a contractor when you're building something new and a contingency to them. Yeah, you, you guys are kind of acting as the contractor, and you're hiring like a sub to do specific work, and they might find something that is not, that's additional to the work, and you would be the one that would use the contingency. It's not like putting it out on a new building to a contractor, and then they'll find as much stuff they can do to use up the contingency. So I'm comfortable with the way this is because you guys have the final say in it. It's just that, it's a timing thing. If you need to come, if we don't give you the money and you need to come back, then you're delaying the process on a process that shouldn't have delays, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I will, I will support this with some trepidation, but.
Just one, just one comment to what Mr. Slaughter said about a few minutes ago on the City Manager's change order authority, just to kind of comment on that a little bit. So the current, current procurement ordinance authorizes the City Manager to approve really any increase up to ten percent over the most recent award by council. That could be for any number of reasons. It could be changing contingency, or it could be things that have nothing to do with construction, you know, at all. So, but that is already baked into our ordinance. This item, I would say, is an alternative to that, because as Mr. Slaughter intimated, I mean, I think the City Manager already could.
Right.
Authorize, if there's a need for it, up to a ten percent overage as it stands today. This is not necessarily better or worse, but I would view this as kind of a different method of getting there. So kind of take that for, for what it is.
And just to add, I mean, Mr. Gardner and myself, we're both licensed professional engineers, right? We have ethical obligations to do what we believe is the right thing. We're not just willy-nilly, oh, we have this money, give it away. Like, we scrutinize these contractors a lot.
And we're not questioning that, so, okay. Anything else?
Just the fact, I think we need to keep the infrastructure strong. When I was in San Diego working at a TV station, every day we did stories about the sewer system failing, sinkholes, you know, gushers. So if we see something that's a problem, we should get it fixed.
No, I agree with that, there's no question. Okay, any other comments? Do you want this on consent, or you want to talk about it Thursday?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point three, please.
I approve a purchase order to Ferguson Water Works for ductile iron pipes fittings.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Rich Gardner, Director of Public Utilities. The item before you today is for the authorization of a purchase order for ductile iron pipe and fittings for use in a water distribution system. These pipe fittings are stocked in the Public Utilities Warehouse and used in the construction of new pipelines and the repair of existing ones, thereby allowing us to efficiently maintain the water and sewer infrastructure. There were three bidders for this contract. Ferguson and Fortoline Water Works were the low bidders for their selected items of this not-to-exceed contract in the annual amount of three hundred and sixty thousand per year. This is a one-year contract with the option for two one-year renewals for the term of August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three until August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. I'm asking for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Okay, consent? Thank you. Solid Waste, eight point one, please.
Authorize the purchase of vehicles and equipment in the, in the not-to-exceed amount of ten million, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars budget in the fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Good afternoon, Thacker Consen, Fleet Manager. The Fleet Division is requesting a consolidated expenditure authorization in the not-to-exceed amount of ten million, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment per the attached spreadsheet. New purchases are to replace designated units due for replacement in fiscal year twenty-four, which have reached the end of their useful and economic life. Factors used to determine the end of useful and economic life include, but are not limited to, age, life-to-date mileage or hours of operation, historical maintenance costs as compared to like vehicles, operating costs per mile or hours, anticipated ongoing repairs, and physical condition. Also, due to delays in manufacturing, the Fleet Department is requesting to begin procurement of the vehicles and equipment on the fiscal twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four vehicle replacement ahead of the fiscal twenty-four budget that starts in October. I would also say, in these tumultuous times that we've been having, we've been doing an excellent job of staying with our alternative fuel plans going forward. We had this discussion last year, and as of FY twenty-two, thirty-two percent of the eligible vehicles were shifted to alternative fuels. FY twenty-three, forty-seven percent of the eligible vehicles were shifted to alternative fuels. And in FY twenty-four, we're planning to have seventy-six percent of the eligible vehicles shift to alternative fuels. We have already had to change, we had twenty-two hybrids listed for replacement with, not replacement, but for hybrids, and we have already been told now we can only get eighteen, and that may change going forward. Order banks are. And in FY '24, we're planning to have 76% of the eligible vehicles shift to alternative fuels. We have already had to change, um, we had 22 hybrids listed for replacement with, not replacement, but for hybrids. And we have already been told now we can only get 18 and that may change going forward. Order banks are open and closed. For example, police vehicle order bank opened in June of last year and they're not open yet. The Mavericks were open and closed already. Responders are open and closed already. So we wrote letters of intent and now the Mavericks and responders and heavy duty vehicles have opened again. So as you can see, it's a very different time for all of us in fleet. But we're looking at every alternative we can as far as the vehicles that we stayed with. We are now looking at other sources. We went from, you know, the Mavericks, we went to the Toyotas and then the Camrys in order to try to maintain the ability to have hybrids in our fleet. I still believe at this point in time that hybrids are the bridge to the electrification of our fleet. I think that's a very important part of that. Also, I'd like to go on with the rest of it. Authorization is requested to piggyback off the following contracts listed below. Authorization to add additional piggyback contracts is requested as needed to ensure the city is receiving the most competitive pricing for vehicles and equipment, which will be monitored by the procurement division. Once the new vehicles are road ready and equipment has been outfitted, appropriate vehicles and equipment designated for surplus authorization will be transferred to Tampa Machinery Auction. Any questions?
Any questions and or comments?
I have a few. Hi, Perry.
Hello.
So I'm, I'm not, I don't know what open and closed already means. Is there a window when you can order, municipalities can order them?
Yes, and that window of opportunity is fluctuated now in the last few years. Typically, it was like we said with police cars was in June and that's why we came early to council last year and the year before.
So the windows are getting smaller, smaller.
Smaller and they're not the same timeline and some opened up again.
So it's unpredictable.
And for the interceptors that we wanted in the hybrids, we're now told that there will be a very limited production of, we weren't told the amount, but that is going to be very limited. So for police, that's why we went to the responders and they don't come in hybrid. So our first fulfillment is to make sure the police have the vehicles that they need.
So here were just a couple of things. So in looking at that spreadsheet of vehicles at the last attachment, so we have no EVs. We have fully or plug-in hybrids, which are good. So we have hybrids that are replacing many gas cars. Police are getting nine Ford interceptors and two Camry hybrids. Fighters getting two Ford interceptors. Public Works planning IT gas company utilities getting six hybrids. But we have no EV or hybrids in parks and solid waste, two Tora EV carts. What are those for?
You said Tora?
Yeah, EV carts.
Yeah, those are the carts, well, there's actually should be more than that, but, um, and that's another issue. Those carts where you see all those Tora carts, that has been changed now too. We were supposed to receive those in September. Part of them are for Imagine Clearwater, part of them for Parks and Rec. And we were just told this last week that we won't be receiving those till next year.
Okay.
And next year in the middle of the year and then also next year, the end of the year. And that may change also. And yeah, it's very disappointing to have to deal with these things like that, but we will move forward and see what else we need to do.
So how would you say, you know, and I know it's not, you know, whatever the supply is and demand and, but how are we tracking with the green fleet and green print plan? Do you have an updated plan or, you know?
We are actually ahead of schedule.
Are we?
Yes, we are. The green fleet light duty vehicle replacements for alternative fuels doesn't start until 2027.
Okay.
So when we started, I believe it was 2019, having a discussion on what that picture looks like. And the decision was made to let's start with hybrids and then hybrids being the bridge to electric. And that's been pretty successful right now.
Okay.
And we need to get infrastructure in place to go electric.
And then are you taking, you know, are you guys looking at the Inflation Reduction Act and those kinds of grants that come down for EV infrastructure and stuff for the city?
I have not. We are aware of it, but I haven't dug in deep into it though.
Would that be something our grant writer would help with?
I have provided updates as we get them from our lobbyists. So I'm sharing that with Sarah and she'll reach out to staff once she reads through it.
And then the Southern Alliance, we've been dealing with also, Electric Alliance, Dory.
Southern Alliance for Clean Energy with Dory? Yeah, they're great. Okay. That's good. All right, well, good to hear that we're still on track.
Anything else on this item? Consent? Thank you. Eight point two, please.
Mayor Council and Fleet Manager again. On August 4th, 2022, council approved the vehicle replacement list for fiscal year 2023, authorizing purchase of replacement vehicles and equipment. This agenda item is requesting council to declare surplus of the vehicles and equipment detail to be replaced per the list and authorize disposal via auction through Tampa Machinery Auction. Fleet will continue to bring forward agenda items for vehicles and equipment from the 22, 23 replacement list as their replacements are deemed road ready. And bringing this forward later in the year like this shows you how late we're getting the vehicles from last year. We still have 26 vehicles that we haven't received yet. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing thing. And again, it looks like this will go on into 2025. Hopefully it stops there. We had discussed that in the beginning with council in 2021, 2022, 2023, and it just keeps going forward more and more. And I hope this is not the case going forward.
Can I ask a question about that? So if we have all these orders and back orders, how much of our money is tied up with these orders? Do we put down some tiny little deposit so that we can earn interest on our dollars that are set aside for this fleet or?
Uh, we write letter, like in this case, not this case, but the case for just upcoming year, we write letters of intent.
That's it.
Beyond that, I.
They don't have our money? Our good faith money or any deposit? Great. Okay. You know, if we're tied up for years, I'm not having them earn interest off of it.
Anything else? Anything else? Okay, consent? Thank you. Eight point three, please.
Authorize a contract to Waste Connections of Florida for a period of one year for the processing of municipal single stream recycling commodity as a contractor's material recovery facilities in a cumulative not to exceed amount of $1,020,000 pursuant to invitation to negotiate 29-23.
Good afternoon, Mayor Councilmember, Curvin St. Amy, Solid Waste Director. Today before you use a contract for single stream recycling, on October, excuse me, on April 23rd, 25th, 23, Evaluation Committee met to evaluate the invitation to negotiate number 25-22 for single stream recycling. We received two bids from Waste Connection and Waste Management. The committee met and to evaluate the bids. During that time, we decided to, we decided to offer a negotiation between two both vendors because of the return cost. During negotiation, Waste Management's initial proposal was $159.33 per ton to the Tampa Ebor Materials Facility and $189.63 per ton to the Clearwater Transfer Station with 100% revenue sharing. After the second meeting, Waste Management's proposal was lowered to $154 per ton to the Tampa Ebor location and $183 per ton to the Clearwater Transfer Station with, with 100% revenue sharing. Waste Management declined to offer a cut rate without revenue sharing at that time. Additionally, Waste Connection's initial proposal was $140 per ton with no revenue sharing to the Tampa, to the St. Pete location. After second meetings, the proposal, the proposal were lowered to $120 per ton with revenue sharing with a sliding scale, which we have provided in a package. So currently our proposal, we are, is Waste Connection at 120 per ton with an AMV based on the market rate.
Okay. Questions or comments? Yes.
I appreciate that you negotiated the revenue sharing. I think that's really important and lowered the price from 140 to 120.
Thank you. It was a lot of negotiating back and forth between both parties.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Consent? Okay, thank you. Eight point four, please.
A quick issuing customer credits refunds for recycling service charges, charges for a period of July 2022 through December 2022.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Jeff Cool, Division Controller, Solid Waste. We wanted to give you guys an update this afternoon. I know the interim director, Michael Maxwell, had met in front of council, I want to say January of this year, once we were in the midst of our recycling issues. So with that, I'll take you through this. So I wanted to touch on how far we've come. What we're looking to do fits into our strategic plan that was adopted at the city in environmental stewardship. So, you know, in adopting renewable resource usage and waste reduction practices, you know, a big part of that is the recycling aspect of it as well. But we also need to continue to focus on reducing the initial consumption. So kind of a recap, in early January, up until about mid-March, new solid waste administration took over. Curvin St. Amy recently promoted to the director over the department. We started taking the recyclables back to waste management. There was that period in time between July of 2022 through December where there was no recyclables going to waste management. So that started up again. Additionally, we worked on some short and long-term solutions. So the contract that was in place on the short-term basis with waste management was $150 a ton. So you compare that to what Curvin just talked about and just those initial short-term challenges and costs, which is much greater than, you know, what we were used to. The other big component of that is we were only able to recycle about a third of our single stream material that was coming in. The other two thirds contamination, waste management as the processor was having issues with the amount of material they could accept. And then also internally, we had issues. We usually operate two tractor trailer trucks that go from our transfer station to the processor, which at the time was in Ebor, and one of those two was down. So that limits the amount of tonnage that we can move. So in mid-March 2023, we started taking the recyclables to Waste Connections. That being, like I said, we were getting charged 150 a ton for waste management and we were at 125 a ton for Waste Connections to, you know, obviously cut down on that added expense. We've continued to work on long-term solutions and the key aspect is 100% of single stream recycling collected is being sent to Waste Connections. There is no diversion of that material whatsoever. And we've been averaging four to five loads of recycling per day of single stream as long as our two tractor trailers are operational. And then even on some days, when we're a little slower on our Wednesdays where we don't run our routes, we're able to have an extra tractor trailer move that recycling product so it doesn't build up at our admin complex. I also wanted to touch on our dashboard that was created to enhance transparency with our citizens. And kind of as you can see, and we'll touch on in a little bit, the, the lack of materials that were being processed in July through December. You can see only 10 tons in that six-month time period. Whereas starting in January with waste management, we moved 230 tons all the way up to a high of 871 tons in March, which is when we went from waste management to Waste Connections. So what's coming up? Staff is working with an outside consultant, Kessler Consulting, on routing software to make sure that we're running more efficiently. We have a lot of old paper routes, routing materials that we're using for the routes. We need technology to be able to do that. So that is completely lacking and we will be upgrading that. Kessler provided us with a technology memo and we're looking to implement that shortly. Also wanted to touch on at the county level, Pinellas County has been doing public forums to see about making recycling in unincorporated mandatory. I myself live in unincorporated, so I'm affected by that as well. I used to live in the city of Clearwater. So it's the best for everybody, municipalities and all residents within Pinellas County. I'm not sure if council is aware, but they have said that by 2103, I believe it is, that our landfill will be completely filled and we will have to transport that waste outside of the county at a much higher rate if that landfill fills early. So if we were to say end our recycling program, that accelerates that timeline by about 25 years. So that just shows the importance of recycling for the city. Credits. So we looked at the considerations for re-earning the trust of our citizens and our businesses within the city. One thing to keep in mind, we did pay to dispose of all that material. Also for our residential customers, currently the charge is $3.38 a month per ordinance. That is scheduled to go up 3.75% this October. And then a new rate study will come and we'll look at those new rates for future years. So from a credit perspective, we looked at a full rate credit, which I believe is what Mr. Maxwell brought up originally, as well as a disposal cost differential. So kind of the cost between recycling versus what we would have paid to Pinellas County Solid Waste. So the first approach, which is a full rate credit, as if the recycling was not even picked up, would run the city based on single family, $20.28. So that's six months at $3.38 a month for service. So I know that seems very small, but recycling is about 10% of your monthly bill on a given month. And then for our commercial and multifamily customers, because they vary in their types of services, different size containers, different frequencies of pickups, their credit would vary for each customer. So the total estimated credit that the city would need to, you know, if we were going to look at July 2022 through December 2022 is $1,123,417.91. Additionally, we have municipal partners, or we had municipal partners in the town of Bel Air and the city of Safety Harbor. So when we looked at their, what we had been charging them, we would be looking at a refund of $14,120.42 for Bel Air and Safety Harbor would be looking at $62,925.63. Safety Harbor had more material, so that's kind of why we have the differences between the two municipalities. So that total would come to $77,036.5. An alternative option that I briefly mentioned at the beginning is if we looked at kind of that differential between our cost of our recycling versus the kind of the tipping fee that we're paying to Pinellas County, that would have only netted a 81 cents per month for each single family, times that six months or $4.86. Additionally, same scenario, commercial and multifamily residences would vary based on their types of service. So that estimated credit would have only been a total of $177,056.91 or about 10% of what the full credit would be. And we do not recommend taking that approach. I'm available for any questions.
Questions or comments? Go ahead.
When we talk about the commercial and multifamily, that their credit would vary, that's condos, apartments, right? How, do you have to, you know, look at the number of units and then let them know what that credit will be? And is it going to be easy for staff or standardized or?
Um, it will be easier for the multifamily because the multifamily is charged on what's called the ERU rate. So that's based on number of units in, say, an apartment complex. The commercials where it'll be a little bit more challenging on a more case-by-case basis because we have to look at the frequency of pickup, the size of their containers to, to generate that.
Would, because of that challenge, if we vote to have, you know, refund or credits or however we vote, will every customer receive it at about the same time? Or is it going to take longer to get the condos or multifamily?
We, we would attempt to have everybody at the same time from this, and Jay can add on.
Jay Riedman's Finance Director. Our recommendation to council is that this credit be applied as six months of free service going forward for ease of administration. That vastly simplifies how this would actually be administered. We would just simply turn off the recycling charge for six months on all the accounts. The only downside to that is we will have some one-offs where customers no longer live in Clearwater, and they're saying, I was in Clearwater during this period of time. It's much less expensive to deal with those one-offs than it is to try to administer specific credits to the vast number of accounts that we would have to apply the credits. It's a relatively small amount per account. It's just, it would be a lot of inefficient administrative effort to try to do it accurately versus just simply providing six months of free service going forward.
Do you think in our billing, the billing statement, it would say, you know, you are receiving month one out of six of credits?
We can absolutely add that on the.
So it's not a big shock once things start to be charged again?
You have to keep in mind, this is only $3.85 or whatever. Expectations are an issue with our, with our customers, because if they're thinking their entire solid waste and recycling bill is going to be zero, that's not the case. Recycling's a fairly small percentage of that.
And then I had a question about, during part of your presentation, you said 100% of the recycling collected is being taken by waste connections, four or five loads a day, as long as two trucks are operational. How often might there be only one truck? You know, I mean, is that a continuing problem for us to get enough trucks to take our recycling where it needs to go?
Sometimes we do have issues where the truck doesn't want to start on a given day, where we've worked with our partners at Fleet to get those trucks back up and running. We can borrow trucks from our other section. So we have the same kind of truck running at the transfer station, taking any of the waste directly to the county, so we might swap those trucks out and then use one of those trucks, so that way we don't fall behind on getting our single-stream recycling over to the vendor.
So we're not falling behind? Even if one truck is not working, we're not?
Right, because otherwise we would have a pile at the admin complex.
What about that practice, I think, where there was a judgment about contaminated routes that didn't get picked up? What's going on with that?
So with contamination, we've worked with waste connections, we're working to redefine, and that's why the dashboard, we took down the part on contamination, to ensure that we're all aligned on what contamination is considered. But I do know that all loads have been going directly to waste connections for processing.
I think it's important to be real clear about what, what we consider contamination and, and the receiver considers it, and then be transparent with the public about this costs us money if it's not clean, right?
Absolutely, yeah, because there's contamination, there's residue, I mean, there's a couple, you know, industry words that they'll use that they may not be able to, you know, do that recycling. I mean, I work within the solid waste department, and I even find it interesting, Domino's is sending me an email saying, hey, recycle your pizza box. But the problem is, we can't take that recycling in because our processor will not accept it. So those are the challenges that we're trying to overcome with education of the public and things like that, to ensure that we get clean product and we don't have contamination.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So if we approve this Thursday night, when will that start?
We would recommend October 1st for ease of simplicity, just being the new fiscal year. I think would make the most sense.
Okay, okay.
And does Jay want to comment at all on the reserves to handle over $1 million? Well, it's going to be almost $2 million if we, if we approve the full credit during those six months, as well as our Safety Harbor.
Jay Riedman's Finance Director.
I did the math, it's $1 million, too, right?
$1 million, two thereabouts, with the 3.75% increase plus the Bel Air and Safety Harbor. I'd recommend about maybe not to exceed of $1 million three, so that we don't have to worry about exceeding that. But it will be whatever that six months of free service computes to.
And the increase is 13 cents a month.
What's that?
And the increase will be 13 cents a month.
As far as reserves, we're blessed, we're lucky in that the Solid Waste and Recycling Fund currently is, is solid, has a good level of reserves in excess of the minimum. We will be also doing a rate study this next year, so that we can incorporate this into the rate study and make any adjustments necessary, but it's not an issue currently for, for our reserves.
Anything else? Okay, and from what I understand, that this organization we're dealing with now is not quite as stringent on what the.
Consider contamination.
Contamination, yeah, contamination. Okay, that's good. All right, all right, nothing else? Okay, we'll see you on Thursday night. Thank you. All right, City Clerk, 9.1.
Reappoint Frank Persaschino to the Nuisance Abatement Board with a term to expire September 1, 2027. Council members, Mr. Persaschino has been serving on the board and completed his term, and he is willing and able to be reappointed.
Consent?
Thank you.
9.2, please.
Reappoint Gary Baker to the Nuisance Abatement Board with a term to expire September 1, 2027. Mr. Baker has also been serving on the board, complete term, no absences, and is willing to serve again.
Consent? Thank you. 9.3.
Appoint Emily Panau to the Sister Cities Advisory Board with a term to expire August 17, 2027. Unfortunately, the individual she is replacing, Ms. Sally Parks, passed away, so that's the reason for the appointment, and she was the only applicant we have in this category. So she will be representing the Clearwater Arts Alliance representative.
Okay, consent? Thank you. 9.4, please.
Appoint Jarvis Sheeler to the Brownfields Advisory Board as the Government Agency Representative to fill an unexpired term through June 30, 2025. Council members, Mr. Sheeler will be replacing the Government Agency Rep., that was a city employee, Julie Phillips, so he will be filling that role. And again, the only applicant in this category.
Consent? Thank you. 9.5, please.
Appoint Mahaly Marshall to the Brownfields Advisory Board with a term set to expire August 17, 2027. Ms. Sue Hart was serving on this board for a long time, and she just came to the point where it was just time for somebody else. So we were able to find another resident in the Brownfields area, Mahaly Marshall, to serve in this capacity. The board should be ramping up soon, because they're working on a few Brownfields grants.
Consent? Thank you. 9.6, please.
Appoint Daniela Sharad to the Nuisance Abatement Board with a term to expire September 1, 2027. Ms. Nancy O'Neil was serving and completed her second term, and Ms. Sharad has submitted an application.
Consent? Thank you. 9.7?
Appoint Philip Rigari to the Marine Advisory Board to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through March 31, 2025. Miranda Douglas was serving on this board, and unfortunately, she has left, moved outside of city limits. That's the reason why we're filling this vacancy, and he was the only applicant we had on file.
Consent? Thank you. 9.8, please.
Appoint Jonathan Barnes to the Public Art and Design Board as a Clearwater Arts Alliance representative to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through March 31, 2026. Mr. Barnes is filling Ms. Brianne Roberts, who was filling in that same category, but she has moved outside of city limits, so that is the reason for the appointment.
Okay, consent? Thank you. 9.9.
Appoint an individual to fill an unexpired term through April 30, 2025, on the Public Art and Design Board, and the resident knowledge in fields of public art, education, or community affairs category through April 30, 2025. With Mr. Barnes moving into the other category, we now have a vacancy. And in your addenda packs, you have applications for Karen Cunningham, Lisa Bills, Matthew Estes, Rebecca Irvin, Sharon Reed Kane for your consideration.
It's your pleasure.
I think we should discuss on Thursday. It's a tougher one.
Okay, well, Councilmember DeSheris here. Okay, let's discuss this on Thursday then. All right, let's move on to City Attorney. First of all, any City Manager reports? Okay, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item, 10.1, is mine. This is a proposed extension of due diligence with the Gotham Denunzio contract. As the council knows, we have HRNA as our outside consultants who are reviewing that deal. It's pretty comprehensive in the work that they're doing. I think Mr. Delk would agree. So Mr. Delk, Mr. Ravens, and I have had bi-weekly meetings with HRNA. I think that's progressing the way it needs to, but because of the complexity of what we've asked them to do, they need time to make sure that they're not only gathering the data, but also correctly interpreting the data that they gather. So Ms. Cole and I have been talking, and we agreed that extending due diligence through October makes a lot of sense. I was originally prepared to ask council only through September, because I'm pretty confident we'll bring this for a public discussion by the end of September. However, Ms. Cole asked for the end of October, so that gives some extra time in case there are either last-minute questions or things that we need to clarify, which seems reasonable to me. So I'm fully in support of this.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay. Consent on that one? Okay, thank you. And again, those City Manager verbal reports? No? Okay, and City Attorney verbal reports?
All right, so Mayor, this is a decorum discussion. So as the council knows, we've had a recent conversation about how to get through council meetings more efficiently, and decorum is a big part of that, because the purpose of any government meeting, or any private meeting for that matter, is to get through the agenda, to get through the purpose for which the body has convened. The council has directed me to explore different decorum options that could help us do that. And of course, it's always a balance, because on one hand, we need to get through the agenda and to do it in a manner that's respectful of each other, respectful of our citizens, respectful of staff, and then at the same time, that we are also respectful of the First Amendment, and that we do it in a manner that's consistent with the Constitution. So to that end, as I started looking at this, I found several different options. And some of these are best practices, I would say, that I've seen from other government entities. Some of these are things that have been tested through litigation, and the validity of which has been upheld by the courts, and they have withstood a First Amendment challenge. So I picture this item as a menu of options. Now, that's like coming to a nice restaurant. You can order something off the menu, you can order something on the menu, you can order one of everything. And so it is entirely the council's decision as to which of these items, or all of them, that you would like to adopt. It's also your discretion to adopt none of them, as well as other items that are not on the menu. But I've presented these for a couple reasons. Number one, I feel confident that each of the items listed here have survived First Amendment challenges. So that's number one. You know, there's always going to be someone who's going to sue for something. That's just the society we live in nowadays. But I do feel confident, constitutionally speaking, that any or all of these will survive, you know, the inevitable First Amendment challenge. So that's part of it. The second part of it is that these are all things that I have seen other government entities adopt in various capacities, so there is some of that best-practice aspect to it as well. So no particular order, they're not, you know, don't read anything into that, they were just the stream of consciousness as I was documenting it. So with that said, I'm happy to answer questions as to any of, any one of these, or all of them, as the case may be. But what I'd like to get from council is to go one by one and to see if there is consensus among council for each of these, for all of them, for none of them. And so that way, I know from a drafting standpoint what to actually draft. And so with council's permission, that's what I would ask.
Okay, I want to start and just, I brought this up because I was asked to. This has been talked about behind the scenes here and by citizens. I've only got seven months left. I don't care what anybody says about me, you know? And like the Vice Mayor said, stuff rolls off your back, and I understand that, but does the staff have to listen to some of the stuff they've been listening to lately? Things are just getting worse and worse, in a lot of people's opinion, including the public. A lot of the public out there sets a terrible tone for the meeting, when you have to listen to stuff that has nothing to do really with city business. A lot of it is imagined. Some of the statements made at the last meeting about the Deputy Chief and the City Manager were completely false, completely, nowhere near true, amongst other things. So, you know, this is not about me. This is not about me saying, I don't want this. I'm doing this for anybody up here who has to sit through any of this for the next X amount of years on the staff. If you don't want to do it, fine, I'll tell the attorney, you know, put it back in his pocket and take it home with him. So I want to hear what everybody else has to say. Yes, sir?
So I think we've all had probably one-on-ones with the City Attorney on this. One of the things that I think we could start off with is moving it to the end of the public comment to the end of the agenda, because, I mean, we're here to do city business, and it's nice, I mean, we should have a time to have public comment, but a lot of the people that are coming up and doing the insulting and all the grandstanding are doing it for the people in the audience, and they don't really want to hear it. You move it to the end of the meeting, they're not going to have an audience. Maybe two or three people left in here. I think that'd take care of it. I also think that we had some issues before with campaign materials during the, we're in the campaign season again. I think that that should be left out, because everybody seems to sit in that one seat there with their sign and get, I think, unfair, you know, television coverage of their candidacy, whoever that's going to be. I would say if we did those two things, that, and we could see how it all pans out, it may take care of the situation. But that's just my opinion. I mean, I'm up for listening to other things, too, but, you know, the guy that was in here in the background with the middle finger salute the whole time that we were swearing in our new chief, I didn't think that was, that was very tasteless for everybody that was looking, but I think you, I don't know, I mean, he could make a, probably a case to say, and that's my comment or the situation, instead of a boo, but, you know, that's just, it's tasteless in here. So I really don't have anything against any of the things you have down here. We can try them all, as far as I'm concerned, but I do think that just putting it at the end will probably solve most of it.
Okay, other comments? Yes, ma'am.
So I appreciate this as a starting point. I agree with Councilmember Albritton. So the first one, move agenda items to an earlier phase in the agenda. So as you said, the point of the meeting is to get through the agenda and conduct a meeting. So people that are here at 6 o'clock to comment on items on the agenda certainly comment on items on the agenda. Those that are here for items not on the agenda will wait until the end of the meeting and then comment. That seems fine to me. So we respect people that are here for city business, to comment on city business before us. The second one, city staff declining to publicly broadcast citizens-produced materials displayed on the overhead projector to ensure that the city does not participate in broadcasting vulgar, racist, or other inappropriate material. I'm cautious about this one, because I haven't seen big instances of anything that's vulgar or disrespectful on that overhead, and I really feel there's a lot of power in visual images. You know, I think of Kathy Flaherty and her iPad movies of trash overflowing in dumpsters and things like that. I mean, there is an impact to have a visual. So I'd be a little more cautious of that. Certainly, we can have rules, and I would think we probably do, that you can't broadcast vulgar, racist, or other inappropriate material, but to prevent everyone from showing a visual, I don't think we need that just yet. I agree on the third one, requiring speakers to direct all comments towards the chair, and that we refrain from personal insults directed at individual council members, unless discussing a particular vote or something that's about city business. The fourth one says clarifying that disruptive activities include the middle finger and similar obscene gestures, and are therefore prohibited from, then the language is "from the audience while another person is speaking at the podium." I would think they're prohibited from the audience, period. So people aren't flashing around the middle finger out in the audience, and not only when somebody's speaking, like that man did during the swearing-in, right? So I don't know the distinction, Mr. Margolis, about only when somebody's speaking, you can't flash, you know, obscenities.
You know, as I said, I mean, this is, this is a menu, you know, that can be modified. You know, I would say that the rules should be as. You know, I would say that the rules should be as narrowly tailored to accomplish our purpose as possible. And so restricting someone who's not at the podium from doing that has a pretty legitimate purpose because we all know that was incredibly distracting from the activity that was actually legitimately taking place at the podium. And it would have been just as disrespectful if it had been another citizen, you know, there at the podium as it had been our chief.
Right.
And so I feel pretty comfortable that that's the case. If the council would like to expand that, say, to include the person at the podium, you know, who's speaking, you know, that would seem to be something that we could deal with as well. But that's something I'd want to look at a little bit more carefully just because then you're talking about the, someone who's actually talking at the podium. Whereas when you're talking about somebody who's not at the podium, it's not their, they don't have the floor, right? It's not their time to be heard in the first place. Whereas the person at the podium has a little bit more leeway in most cases because they're actually at the podium. So if that is something the council would like to expand to cover the person, say, at the podium, then we could do that. But, or if you're like, looking to expand it just to say, at any time, you know, during the meeting, that there's a, no gesture of that kind allowed, that's something we can look at. But I'd want to look at that a little bit more closely to see if that would be sufficiently narrow to survive First Amendment challenge.
Okay. Because I was reading it as, you know, once you're in the chambers, we're not using profanity in the chambers. Either digits or anything, anything else, right? On shirts or verbally or with gestures.
That's something that we're going to have to massage a little bit. So if it's something that the council is interested in moving forward with as far as prohibition on obscene gestures, then that's something we'll probably refine a little bit. Keep in mind that whatever the council gives us sense to today will have to come back before the council after it's been drafted. And so then you'll have more opportunity to kind of craft that a little bit more. But before I even start drafting it, I at least want to know what topics you're interested in. Otherwise, I could present an entire menu and you could say, "Oh, all those, all those foods are terrible on the menu."
Yeah. And then the last one, we've got clarifying that campaign materials are disruptive and therefore not allowed within council chambers regardless of whether such materials take the form of flyers, signs or T-shirts. You know, I had mentioned to you that we've had candidate forums here where people sit in the audience with their candidate's T-shirt or people wear T-shirts of candidates that are running for county or state or national office. I don't, I don't have a problem with campaign. Well, I think you shouldn't be distributing probably flyers in here or having signs. But if you have a T-shirt on that's not, again, doesn't have profanity or something on it and has somebody's name, I don't, I think that's a freedom of expression.
Well, I can see the difference in a forum, but I don't think there should be any political materials during a council meeting.
No.
Just like I don't think there should be any up here endorsing somebody against somebody that they're sitting next to, which I will say right now I will not do this next campaign in the seat that they're running for or whatever. So I just don't think it belongs and it never did when I was here. And that's what just bothered me when I saw it. I mean, I sent a text message during that one time. It was like, "Well, tell so-and-so to bring their sign out." I'm like, "Well, that's not the point. What's the sign doing there in the first place?" You know? It's like, you know, this is not supposed to be a political rally. It's supposed to be an event to discuss the people's business. So that's my opinion.
That's a good point. That's fine.
So, anyway. Anything else?
I'm all good. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm in a minority here. But I believe the little guy has the chance to take a shot at us that, you know, we should be big enough to not let it bother us. I, I remember back in, when I was asking to be put on the Downtown Development Board, April 16th, 2020, right there at that podium, wealthy and powerful Scientologists, many of them titans in the community, came to address us on that subject. And one after another, they were calling me names. They were saying outrageous things about me. They were putting quotes in my mouth that I never said. Ray Cassano tried to play a video that he said would show me cursing and vehemently getting in the way of Scientologists. He called it quite ugly and reprehensible, but he wasn't able to get the video to play. Well, since he's an elected official, I did a records request and I got a copy of that video and I put it on my YouTube channel so everybody could see. This was nothing there. You know, one, one after another, they, people came up and said things that were troublesome. Kenan Kitzel told about a black family who moved near him in the South Side of Chicago who found a cross burning in their yard. And he suggested that I am just as bad as that. Having this bigot sitting in at DDB meetings would be like David Duke sitting in at an NAACP meeting. Grotesque, unsafe and intolerable, as he put it. And as much as I appreciate Kenan being a strong defender of African-Americans, I, I think he went a little overboard with his comments. And, you know, that was just some of what happened. And I didn't lash out at any of them. You know? I also don't remember anybody else speaking up from the day of saying, "Oh, perhaps that was, you know, uncalled for." But that's okay. I understand I'm a little more tolerant of this type of behavior than most. But having watched YouTube videos of the sheer insanity that happens at some council meetings across the country, I think we're getting awfully lucky. I agree that armed fishermen with his finger was terribly inappropriate. If we tried to escort him out of here though, he would have created as big a scene as he did when he came here the first time and was shouting and screaming just so he could get videos himself with the police hauling him out of here. But again, I'm in the minority, so.
All right, any other discussion on this right now? So what's your pleasure?
I have one other thing I wanted to mention. When, you know, when people come and speak before us for items on the agenda, certainly we take that into consideration when we vote or as we discuss. But when they come and speak to us for items not on the agenda and sometimes someone will say, "We'll have staff get back to you," or something like that, I think it's important to have, you know, some sort of confirmation that that's actually happened. And, you know, if we can think about that, I don't know if it would be attached to the minutes, you know, an email confirmation or communication with whatever resident we said that to, or if it would just be shared with us. But I think that's an important step to make sure that people who speak on items not on the agenda are actually heard and, you know, if, if there is something we can do. Sometimes they just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if it's something that's legitimate, like this is happening in my backyard and the city's not clearing it up, or this is happening, then certainly that's what I always say someone will get back to. So, yeah, it would be nice to know somebody to get back to them. Usually we do, but maybe not all the time. So. All right, what's your pleasure in moving forward on this?
I think we should discuss with Lena on Thursday.
Okay. This Thursday, Mr. Margolis, with Lena?
If that's the council's pleasure. I mean, I, what I'm hearing at least right now is it seems to be, please correct me if I'm wrong, that of the menu, there is support, at least among a majority, for moving agenda items first. So you get through the agenda items first before you're going through non-agenda items. And in addition to that, if I'm hearing correctly, there is majority support for prohibiting campaign materials as well as endorsements or any kind of, you know, I'll phrase it appropriately, political stuff. We'll just say purposes of this conversation here, either on the dais or in the audience, except of course during a candidate forum. Of course, that would be permitted in that context. But other than that, those are the two, at least that I'm hearing, seem to have majority support right now. So I could certainly act upon those two. If there is, if I've heard that correctly or if the council would like, then that entire conversation can be deferred. But given that this is staff direction and not being voted on at this time, I would prefer to have those types of conversations at work session. There will be a time for the council to actually vote on whatever comes before you and of course, time for citizens to comment before you vote on it. But right now, there's nothing to comment on from the public because there's, there's nothing before you. I need some direction from the council to know what you're comfortable with.
Well, from what I heard, we kind of had consensus on everything but item number two possibly. Is that correct?
Doing away with the visuals?
Yeah, no, no, that was the one that you said that you didn't like.
Yeah, I think we should keep the visuals for now.
Yeah, okay.
I do too.
Yeah, okay.
One thing just to clarify on that point. Yeah, I, I would not necessarily suggest getting rid of visuals. As councilbackman pointed out, there are a lot of legitimate and powerful visuals I think that can be helpful. What I would suggest is council considering whether all of those visuals should be broadcast to the public is a different question from whether people can display them. That's a very different question. It is not easy, I will tell you, to draft a rule that just says, "We will broadcast something that we think is appropriate versus we will not broadcast something that's inappropriate." Certainly for Joelle and her staff, it's a lot easier to have it as a binary system. Either we broadcast or we don't broadcast. We currently do and certainly by all means, we can keep that as the practice. However, we are not well set up for a situation in which someone does, for example, put pornography or something like that on the overhead projector or our hurdles don't account for that very well. That's it. We don't have to do any of these, let alone all of these. And so to the point about solving a lot of real-world problems, one option is to simply allow the current practice to remain in place and then if it becomes a problem, to address it at a later time. So these are always flexible rules. That's the nice thing about them being council rules is they can change as the council changes as well as a lot of our needs change as well. So as I said, just a later with menu options.
I would say keep the visuals for now until, unless...
You should be able to cut away in the control room to a different shot if there's something being broadcast that shouldn't be.
Well, if that happens, someone here in this seat will stop the meeting and turn the cameras on.
What about the third one?
I think we, you know, we, let's draft everything but the second one and then we'll see when we talk to councilmember Tishera. We'll have another discussion at another work session and go from there. See what the drafts look like. I think that was the consensus, wasn't it, pretty much?
Is, as to the third one, which is directing comments toward the chair and refraining from personal insults unless discussing a vote that was cast or statement made by that individual council member. I think I heard the mayor and councilmember Beckman indicate their support for that particular proposal. I'm not, and I am hearing from the vice mayor that there's really none of these that may be of interest to him. But I want to make sure that I understand correctly because we don't get to vote on anything today, so I want to make sure I am hearing correctly from each of you.
I, I won't object if this is the will of the rest of the council.
Four items other than item number two?
Three.
Three, um, no, the four, well, number two's the one we're not going to...
I think everything but number two.
That's what we talked about, right?
Yep.
All right. Draft those up and then we'll talk about them again.
Okay, very good.
All right, anything else?
No, that'll, that'll be the plan. So just to put the, the epilogue on that. So I'll start working on a drafting of that. We'll likely bring that back at the next work session or at the plate as the work session after that. And then you'll get to see drafts of it. Obviously, the public will get to see it. Public will get to comment well before anyone votes on it, et cetera. So that'll be the plan to at least start shaping it. If councilmember Tishada, when she returns, indicates that she would like to participate in that conversation prior to that, then we can always add that to a work session in the interim as well so that she can also weigh in on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any new business? Yes, ma'am?
So for future meetings, right? New business for future work sessions?
Yes.
Okay. I attended a number of neighborhood meetings in the last couple of weeks. And if we could have at some point an update on the Bel Air and Gulf to Bay intersection plans, I don't know if that's with FDOT in conjunction with the city, but that's, you know, it's out there by Morningside Meadows. It's a really dangerous intersection. And there was the talk of this Michigan left-turn lane. And so residents were wanting to know where we are with that, where we are in planning and all that. And then there was a discussion of, in a couple of neighborhood meetings, one on San Pia, one on Edgewater Drive Neighborhood Association with motorized bikes and some kind of regulations on the trail. And I know that's part of a county thing. And so this certainly, you know, doesn't have to come, you know, next meeting or anything because it's a bigger discussion, I think, countywide. It's been brought up at the Board of County Commissioners as well and maybe with Floyd Pinellas about what kind of approach would we have on the trails and/or sidewalks with people with these electric bicycles now. So there's some, some big concerns about safety and increased use and all that stuff. So just hopefully that's on the radar.
Okay. And I guess we will reschedule the Trackstar Award presentation for another meeting since these folks couldn't get here for whatever reason. Okay. All right, nothing else? All right, good meeting. We'll see everybody Thursday night. We'll see everybody Thursday night.